Hello, thanks to you all, sit down, take a break. Good evening, good evening, thank you, I'm sorry for a couple of minutes late, I just had to get finished in there. The ones that's on fire alarms, the bathrooms down through that door there, if anybody needs them, please do feel free to have a sip of tea and coffee and water for that meeting. I don't have a chap in, but I'd like to wish everybody a peaceful and respectful evening of discussion when we act straight for the people of Falmouth. Could we refrain from using our phones, please? We are recording this meeting live for part one, obviously they'll offer part two, is everybody okay with that?
I'm fine, it's all okay.
That's okay, no, that's fine, that's fine. Keep it real, please be kind and respectful to one another. I'd like to see everyone role models the behaviour we expect of each other. And please do raise your hand at the corner point of order at the time if you feel the stability and respect pledged before. And remember, you stand up when you're addressing the chamber, that's a bit different to a normal committee meetings. Now, I have an iPad to see, we're going to try and do that as opposed to... Please do know, so first things we have any apologies, please?
Caster team, please, do you have anything to say?
I have received apologies from Council of Fargo. Anybody else have any apologies? No? Okay, thank you. Is there any interest in dispensations being on the agenda this evening? Take that as a no. And I'll propose the minutes as confirmed that it's an accurate record of the meeting held on the 18th of September. I'll propose up in the chair, if you have a second, please. Louise, that's for council, that's totally sorry. Everybody in favour? That's Carrie, thank you very much. So then we'll move straight on to the community safety and fire report, please.
Thank you, right, that's wonderful. So, those who don't know me, I'm Martin Havel, I'm the station manager at Falmouth Fire Station. So it's a great opportunity to just have a quick word and tell you what's going on on the station over the past three months. The way I run the station, I really enjoy the community side of things, so I came to the station, start this year really, and we've been building a bit. Obviously, we had a journey of Armed Forces Day, Inshore Ships etcetera, but over these last couple of months, we've really ramped it up. We've had a couple of car washes, we've had our firework display, we've had open dates. And actually, the firework display has raised, I said it's over here, 6,000, but actually, I've just spoken to the team, it's 9,000 pounds we raised. So, out of the money that we took on the gate, we have 9,000 pounds put aside for charitable funds. Some of that's going to firefighters charity, but the rest is down to our community. So we leave our community to give us a call and say, we could do some suits for the kids to play at school with, it's stuff like that. And it just goes to the firefighters themselves, those are the ones that decide where the money's going. So please, if you know something that needs a hand, families, groups, whatever, it don't have to be a charity, they just have to be something that needs a bit of a hand. We've got the money there to hand it out, we do want to hand it out, we don't hold it for next year, we've got enough money for the firework for next year. We've also raised 3,000 pounds for firefighters in Ukraine, and also our firefighters charity through car washing. As I speak, the Santa's Grotto is going on, we did it last night, we had rain there, live rain there last night. And tonight, we've got donkeys, all dressed up in their vehicle, but we have a good problem with delivering the donkeys, and the lady actually walked them down the road from Kevillian to the station, I don't know how they're going to get them back. I think we could be having donkeys for the rest of the year. So we kind of run our service with response, protection, and also we look at prevention. So I thought I'd just run you through what's been happening. So over the past three months, we've attended 153 calls in and around the Falmouth area. And that's also supported by our on-call firefighters. So the on-call are there to support the station when we leave the station, but also to support our set of real fires. So they'll come and join us as well. So it's really important to recognise the people in our town that work, which is bakers, candlestick makers, if we still got candlestick makers, and then drop everything and just come straight to the station. And believe me, it's a massive commitment that they have to give to support us in the town. So I thought, I'd look at some incidents that we've had and thought, like, what about the environment, how the environment's changing, and how many incidents have been happening over this past three months? Well, we've had massive storms, we had an incident on Troyne Hill where a roof was blown, peeling off the house, and thrown 10 metres up the road and left the lady lying on her bed, looking at the stars. We've only just recently rescued somebody from their house on Trelazwa, it was flooding, going down through their property, they were trapped upstairs. So we're getting quite a lot of environmental jobs, and our crews are working towards that as well. Only yesterday, not environmental, but we had a large laundry fight in the industrial estate up at Trevally, so it's a big laundry unit. When you get burning, under heat and chemicals, it can spontaneously combust, and the fire would go on all night until somebody actually raised the alarm. So quite a large fire there as well. And also, we've got problems with our lithium ion batteries that we're all well aware of. Penrith School had a fire with one of their batteries in one of their computers. So crews turned up to that, it was just a computer with a student in the corridor, and then we found out that all the computers are stored in one room in the school overnight. And it's just an emerging risk that we've got to start thinking about. So the crews are looking into that, and they're looking at how we can provide education on how to look after those sorts of equipment, because we don't want to be losing schools to a tiny battery fire. Always remember a station manager that kind of said, "One spark can make the biggest fire you like", and it is, it's just one spark that we want to stop. We've been around town, we look at our sites and risks, and the crews have looked at 16 sites around the town, including down at the docks. So any ship that comes in the docks, we try and do a kind of a risk inspection that goes onto a mainscreen computer. Especially the ships, we're actually sharing the information about the ships right the way through the country. So other fire services are getting the information on those ships, so that if we turn up to an incident, we've got a really good understanding of what theirs to risk. We've worked with the university a fair bit, with the firework display, trying to find the space going on, but we were aware that there was an incident down the beach, and hopefully, it seems like everything ran smoothly again this year. So just that little bit of education. And we're working with HMS Murthy, I don't know if you're aware, that HMS Murthy is in the docks now, and she's going to be there until April, and we're starting a full-part exercise with them. So we're working with the crews, we're doing fire drills, they're coming to us, large exercises with officers throughout the county. So everything that's happening at Falmouth. Firegate continues to support port health, even in this weather, they're still going out and about in the cold, checking the standard of the waters. And salvation army dropping as well, is going to help, the crews are really enjoying that. We've visited businesses, 37 businesses have been visited as a fire safety inspection, and there has been some enforcement. Don't be frightened by the term enforcement, it's more guidance, just to make people realise that they need to change a few little bits. I'm sure you're aware that the rules around people living in accommodation, coming down in accommodation, the classic, hoard their let's, that's changed, so there's been some changes around that, and we're out and about providing that advice. That involves a few restriction notices. So the training, obviously we've got to keep training, we've got new junior officers at the station, we've got new firefighters joining the station. We've got new on-call firefighters that join the station, and you'd be pleased to know that our on-call firefighters, if you're the top of the team, top of the recruitment, we used to give them a silver alerta, so they get their silver alerta. Just an alerta that they use, but it's been sprayed up as a bit of a joke. But the past three intakes, Falmouth students have been the top. So that's a lot to be said for the on-call station itself and how well it's running. When they have a get-together, they all turn up, which is great, it's a real good vibe up there to be on-call, and obviously the crossover between the on-call and the whole time as well. We're doing IGLs, we're training with the Coast Guard, we're training the SWAS, so SWAS are coming to the station, and they're doing road traffic collision drills with us, so they drive the ambulance in, and we're working together. And also, we're being working with the RMI, doing some towing training. So our firegate is out and about all times, and we're also there to back up the RMI. It's just a local agreement that's been going, where it's just moving from strength to strength. I know you're all aware of safeguarding, our crews are maintaining that kind of response for safeguarding. They're all trained in safeguarding, and we're all really lucky that we kind of get our foot in the door, so we can get our foot into the door of pretty well any house, I think it's kind of a throwback from Fireman Sam. We haven't got a police officer, Sam, and sometimes we don't get let in. But now, we're doing a lot of work, we're finding situations in and around Falmouth that we can provide that support and push it on to further safeguarding team. So that's me, that's what's happened at Falmouth. I know that we've had some visitors that have come up, and I'll put it out there again, the station is a community station, and we really enjoy people coming in and us showing you what we do. The old fire service that we all kind of have in the back of our minds has changed, and there's a huge amount of equipment, huge amount of change at Falmouth. So we'd really welcome you to come in and pop in, grab a cup of tea, with any of the watches, they're everybody. They're not big baldy firefighters with big moustaches anymore. We're firefighters through and through, and we've got so many different skills that we can cross over into so many different jobs. So thank you for the time there.
Yeah, thank you very much for such a comprehensive report. I'd urge any of you to go up there, I've been up a few times for various exercises, even when stuff in the smoke film building one day, which was actually remarkable fun, so it's very much a community asset that we have, so please don't go and use them. Council Evans?
A very interesting report, Martin, thank you very much. Two items, one was the state of the fire station.
Yes.
Some years ago, there were proposals about closing the station, many years ago. And it's quite interesting, you said it was in need of upgrading. So I am concerned that that station gets run down to the point where Cornwall Council decides that it can dispense with it. So can you satisfy us on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So the station is on PFL project, which was set back probably 22 years ago, and the 25 years time runs out, and we will be handed back the station. So what we've got the opportunity is to turn to the people around the station and say, "As part of the deal, you should have done this, this, this and this." So what I've been doing is driving forwards upgrades and making sure that more work is done, because my view is, it's a community station, I want people to come on the station and feel that it's a nice place to be, and also, my firefighters want a nice place to be. There is no threat to our 24 status at Falmouth. We've been talking about it, we're no joke, we're talking about it, but a lot of people talk about the docks. It's not about the docks, it's about the outlying villages that we support, it's about the speed of our response, maintain. There are more risks, maintaining that, you can't have one on-call, you can't have one 24-hour station without another. So ourselves in Tolbaden sit quite strong, so I kind of allow those fears. But it's my opinion to get more work done and tidy up as much as you can. So a little bit pester power, but it's rocky, you know, we quite often have all the painters and builders and all sorts turning up, so we're going there.
Okay. And one other little point was the iPad, do you know whether it was being charged at the time of fire?
I don't know, I don't know, the crews, it was in a corridor, they made them fire. Yeah, yeah.
A bit more alarming if it wasn't.
It was, the fire took place in the corridor, it could have been someone took it out and threw it in the corridor, I'm not too sure about it. So I acted as fire investigator as well, as part of my role. I didn't do that job, but we are finding hedge trimmers, hoovers are being plugged in and left, and they're charging, charging, charging. They should turn themselves off, and I think it's for the public to recognise that once they start getting warm, something's broken, and we need to just unplug them. So it is a risk for us, yeah.
Thank you. Has anybody else got any further questions to mention? Yeah, Council Eva?
Yeah, not so much questions, but the thank you really to Martin and his team. I was invited up for the Phoenix Project to watch it once again. And it's such a good thing that you do, and your team does. And the difference in people from the Monday to the Friday is exceptional. So I just hope this one thing you wouldn't carry on.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll take it back, it was remarkable, it was a real joy to see the faces and how proud everybody was in the families, it was incredible.
It's self-esteem as well, it's huge, it rises up, just over a week, it's amazing how people can believe in themselves.
Yeah, remarkable. Thank you very much for all you're doing, I very much appreciate that, you're very free to go.
Yeah, I'm going to go up to Santa's Grotto. Special thanks to the town, yeah, council for providing us with some security guys to do the traffic outside, because it's, it has been a little bit hectic, so on the police front, but not my fault, nothing to do with me.
Well, thank you so much.
Right, I'm a small...
And the donkeys at home, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, thank you. So moving on to our final, to the town manager report. I'd like to start with a big thank you to Council Eva and Rome. Most of you know that we have a couple of subjects in our family in the last quarter, and it was, I couldn't have got through it without the support, particularly of these two chaps, but for everybody around the table for stepping up, supporting and helping in my absence. I very, very much appreciated that, so thank you sincerely for doing that, I do very much appreciate it. So as you'd expect, it's been very, very busy, particularly in the last few weeks. I've met with Brigadier Fraser, and we talked about the ongoing relationship through the docks. And here with myself and the two Richards. We've finally got the funding in for the escape parks that you all know about now, which is fantastic. The new sign's been agreed, we're just waiting for it to come back in its final form so we can release it to the public. We had a great tour ships report come back, which was a really great piece of work that we certainly commissioned, about how that had gone, which said things such as punishing well above their weight as a town team, which I thought was really remarkable, and something to really congratulate particularly the town team for all their work on that. I took the Pride Conference, that's something, you know, I've been quite heavily involved with, I very much enjoyed that. Got the fire station, already been, we spoke about that already, I've been up there three or four times, I think, in the last couple of months, and they do some remarkable work up there. I went to the opening of the new climate in Eco, I've been sure if you've not been there yet, it's really long to go and have a look at, there's some really great resources in there, really friendly people, they teach a awful lot, even I learned things despite my background, which is fantastic. I hope this is something one of my favourite things I've done. I also hosted a thank you to the cruise ship ambassadors. Now, those of you who don't know what they do, they're, they're, they're gentlemen walk around in pale blue jerseys and t-shirts all summer, guiding visitors into the docks, around the town and around the docks safely, they really do represent for Falmouth. And this year, they had their work cut out with Armed Forces and tour ships as well. So I really thought it was important that we said a special thank you to them all. So I hosted a lunch here, and they were very, very, very grateful for that, which was really, really quite, it was lovely, it was a lovely thing to be able to do. I attended the parachute regiment dinner and dance, and the several councilor you were there representing, continue dancing. I didn't quite get up on the dance floor, well, I remember to stay the next day, so we were being a little bit careful, we had to get up early. But that was really lovely, and Tom was, gave us the best evening and welcome and really looked after us, so thank you very much for him. Been into an awful lot of schools recently, which is really wonderful, I've become a bit of a minor celebrity to these children, it's very sweet, they're constantly on the street all the time. And I ran a Christmas card competition, and it was really quite remarkable, they'd all written little things on the back, I think, "I met you here, my dad stood with you and held the flag", really, really sweet, and a real pleasure to be able to get into the schools and speak to them, is that being the queen or something? It's kind of quite funny, and they love the stories about the chain and the history and everything, so that's been something I've very much enjoyed. The moment went off really spectacularly, thank you everybody that came to that and made it a really honourable event for Falmouth. We had a lovely, lovely email of thanks from the guides representing the young people who had a really good positioning this year, and so maybe young people to really be involved in that really important event for Falmouth, so that was really fantastic. I attended the Terry Pond's funeral, which I know a number of our councillors went to. It was obviously sad, but I was really proud to see so many people in that room there to represent and say thank you for all the many years of service that he gave this council, and to be able to support the family in a very small way was really important for us to do. So thank you everybody that took the time out of their day to go and attend that. We've had another couple of lovely thanks as well from various members of the public, which is unusual, usually I get emails of people asking me to fix things, but that's a lovely email, so particularly from a gentleman that contacted us, his mobility scooter wasn't working properly, it was going to take six weeks to fix it, and it was taken to the front desk by lovely Lorraine over there. And Val, and myself, and Richard, all, they're slightly harassing the service people, managed to get it fixed and turned around within about seven days, and the man was so genuinely grateful for that, because he used stuff in his house. So it just seems to show that there is an awful lot of little things you can do to make people's lives better in this town, and I'm really grateful to the staff for helping support on that. And that's probably enough for me, but there is one last thing, which is, let my iPad open a second, sorry, it's a problem with having technology rather than paper. One last thing, that we've been having a slight challenge around capacity with our offices in the council. So I came up with a little bit of an idea that myself and the park worked on, to try and streamline and make sure that all councillors get access to all information. So I've written this, I'm going to send it to everybody via email afterwards, so they're able to have a look at it, and feel free to ask me questions once you receive it via email, it's not for discussion right now, because we've got an awful lot to get through. So as we know, our staff work incredibly hard on quite complex tasks. It's becoming evident that a large proportion of their time is being spent managing individual council requests and email traffic. To mitigate this and improve capacity within our staff and enable them to manage their individual workloads, myself and the park agree the following. Request for informations and questions needs to go through the chair of the relevant committee. The chair will then compile these into a simple document to be shared directly with the relevant officer weekly. The officer will then receive the document and send the responses to all councillors, everybody gets the same information, and so we're all privy to that same piece of information. The turnaround, we think, is probably going to be given to the officer on the Monday, receiving response by Friday. So what might happen, because a lot of people are having individual conversations with officers, not everybody is getting access to that information. Some people know something, some people know others. So that will allow full transparency of information and increase efficiency for both staff and councillors. There's also a second part to that, I don't know if any of you, I don't know it, until the lovely councillor Rob Robinson showed me, you've got to schedule emails, so I know a number of us work in the evenings, I work full time, I saw a number of lovely run the table, so I am terrible at sending emails at 11, 12 o'clock at night when I've got a bit of a moment to myself. And there is a simple button, you can schedule send, and it will send it at 8am, so officers aren't receiving our emails very late at night. I think it's really important we look after the wellbeing of everybody, and that's ourselves included and staff. So if we can all try our best to abide by that, I'll send it out via email tomorrow. Thank you. I now think it's number six, which is Deputy Mayor's report, will you get my iPad stuck on? So I'm sorry, Council.
I agree with you, they're emailed by the way, but that's my wife stood up. It's the fact that, you mentioned the cruise ship passengers. They also become the Christmas weekend passengers. And it'd be nice if we could send a letter from the council to fill body and his team to thank them for what they did, because they're right there for the whole of two days, and a lot of them are in their senior years. But, you know, and people feel uncomfortable with them, because you run out and they think it's a grand, a grand there, or something like that. But it'd be nice for us to send a letter on behalf to the council.
I agree, that's a very lovely suggestion, thank you for raising that, Council Eva. Any of you got any questions about my report? Brilliant. I'm not, I can pass over to you.
Well, my main question is my deputy mayorship, which is amazing, I can't believe that time's gone, it's gone so quickly. It's been a really exciting year for Falmouth, we've had all the usual stuff going on, like the sea shanty, but in addition to that, we've had tour ships and Armed Forces Days as well. My brother was over in June from Australia, he stayed in Falmouth for three weeks, and he said, "Is Falmouth always like this?" I said, "Yeah, of course it is, yeah, it's just usual." So yeah, us watching them and his children and grandchildren enjoying the stuff in Falmouth was an absolute pleasure. It just shows what good work we're doing, how it really does affect people's lives, and really reach out to people, so it was really heartening for me. I've been loving shoulders with the great and the good, I've met MPs, the High Sheriff, the Lord Lieutenant, etcetera, lots of official engagements, and it's been an absolute honour to represent Falmouth at those events. And as Curtis already alluded to, everywhere we go, Falmouth punches well above its weight, and we are respected as representatives of Falmouth wherever we go. So all the good work we do is having some real kind of traction in the local community. My favourite event over the year was the tour ships. I met Madam Mayor, we managed to do a day at the docks thanking staff and volunteers, going around and telling everybody how important we think they are. And I think it's important that we as councillors and the Falmouth Town Council team support these people and thank them, because without them, these things, something couldn't happen. So it's really heartening to those people, and I would encourage any councillor here to do some volunteering, because it's so rewarding, it's so valued. I'd like to also mean it's a big thank you to our Falmouth Town Council Events team, because they've gone over and above this year. It's been an absolutely amazing year, they've, you know, they've really put their nose to the ground, so they've absolutely worn themselves out, but it's all been worth it. And a bit of a pat on the back to us, for these councillors who've been brave enough to take on the challenge of tour ships. So I think we can all, you know, I think we all did well on that day, so thank you. I've been to lots of other, less formal community events, and to be honest, I kind of, I think I enjoy this a little bit more, because I feel a little bit more comfortable, and I can speak to people, and I'm not also overwhelmed. I've been to Penmere Station to see the Friends Group, they had an open day, and the fantastic work they do. My new favourite group are the Calm and Carers, so I tend to meet councillor Eva, and I've been speaking to them, and I think I've seen myself having a productive ongoing relationship with them in the future. So everybody, they just turn up, they feed you, talk to you, it's great, so I love that. I've been to Carol concerts, many other informal things, we had festive events all of last weekend, I come down on the Sunday, it's busy on Saturday, and there's just so many people there, so many children, so much joy and happiness. It was just a really, really positive event, didn't see any hassle, any trouble at all, everyone's just seemed to be enjoying themselves, which is what it's all about. I've met lots of weird people, which I absolutely love, and I'm always amazed by how much good work is done in our town by volunteers. They prop up so much stuff, and they really are the fifth sector, you know, they do so much good work in the town. And it's just heartening to me, we're such a vibrant, positive, community-based town, and it absolutely makes me proud to be a very small part of that, so thank you for everyone's being involved in that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very rousing and personal, I enjoyed it very much.
You should.
Yeah. Completely right, it is, and every event we go to, there's volunteers over there coordinating the event. I mean, those of Paracals, you've got eight people there doing raffles and getting people to their seats and everything. Literally, they are what, hoes in Drupps' town are, so. And of course, we're volunteers too, right, you know, we give our time to do this on behalf of our town, so. Really positive, and it's been really lovely to end on the Christmas event, so many lovely things. And the other thing, I forgot to say, my report had an absolutely wonderful email from the family of Little Audi that turned the lights on, who were really overcome with gratitude for how much effort we put into looking after them, making sure that they were voted on hand of lots of gifts, and it was such a special moment for their family after a really difficult year. So thank you all of you for being part of that and helping support their family, it was really wonderful. Right, so moving on to our presentations, which is out of the segment on our agenda. The first one's from Liam Hoban, which is the Senior Premiership Advisor at Cornwall College. Campbell on the 1416 programmes that are aimed at local secondary school. I'll overture you, and I think you're going to, if you'd like to go down the fire ends there, it's the best place for you. And the councilors, if you can allow them to give you his presentation, we'll have questions at the end, if that's okay. Thank you, my technical advisor was on the camera over there. Just thank you for the help. There we go, you're up. Yeah. Just about there, thank you.
Hi, my name's Liam, Falmouth Marine, it's a place of Falmouth Marine School, part of Cornwall College. So just give some brief overview, we're called Five Campuses, one of the biggest FDP colleges in the South West. So we've got all our tiny campuses, Falmouth Marine School, also specialise in marine marine programmes. So we do kind of marine engineering, marine medical, we do the full-time apprenticeships along with our marine science courses. A range of learners, at the moment we've got about 300 learners from all across the county, all across the country really, to come down and to do our courses. The courses range from 12 months right into four years, taught by people of industry experts. So what I've come on today to do is re-talk about this program here. So obviously, as you know, we've got the Counter Sea Project, which hopefully is going to have a lasting impact on local areas in the South West and as well as Falmouth. So obviously, my role really is kind of critical development, is identifying gaps, skill gaps, we have, you know, potential in the job market. So my first kind of idea is really set up a 1416 programme and run it from Falmouth Marine School. So there, kind of a state college, we've got a morning ready, so you've got, you know, remote kind of industry, work crews, kind of fleet of management providers, counter sea partners, and it's not a local issue at all. And what we're going to do is deliver AGCC to local, local, and young people, really to kind of generate that interest initially in coastal, coastal area. So we've got a two-year programme, they will come in, and one afternoon a week, we will send that to them. So kind of what I'd love really is the town council to come on board this programme, and we would have had all the logo dotted there, and it really just, you know, shows we've reached on product, product for the local area, and it shows you what we should kind of make up. So that's what I'll read my whole pitch of the station.
Fantastic. Can I ask?
Nicely succinct, well done.
Yeah, yeah, I love this, you can't do my job, I'm that one's wages. And what, how long do you go back doing that?
I think, I think Council Kirk must come in, might explore that with the intrusion questions.
Okay, Council Kirk then.
I'm just sorry, it's brilliant, and I've spoken...
I'm just sorry, it's brilliant and I've spoken to you briefly about what's happening about it. And the course is fabulous. And what we of course need in Falmouth and in Cornwall is some more of those skills so that our young people can grow up and get some of those decent well-paid jobs that some of these new renewables businesses will hopefully bring to offer. So this is really forward-thinking, I really appreciate you doing it. The issue of course is that it's a GCSE qualification. Maybe you can explain a little more about the issues you had getting it into the schools and the problems with how they're going to take it as funding?
Yeah, yeah, so obviously good schools, obviously leave tables and title to local marine schools. So it has, for them to release the course, the location to us, it has to be a GCSE. Obviously, there's loads of challenges coming in and picking a GCSE that's relevant to the course and what's important to do. The biggest challenge I would find is a bit talking to local secondary schools in the area. They just haven't got the budget to send their students to us. They haven't got the budget to fund it. So I am in talks with Crown State for a minute. They're willing to fund a school for two years as a pilot scheme. And then form out there will see the destination of those young people, whether they go to full-time programmes or apprenticeships. But really, the idea of this programme, that then creates us a complete pipeline from fourteen by two thousand and twenty-one, with qualifications for the young people's doorstep. But yeah, the fun thing is that the biggest challenge at the minute is to get schools on board, because there's a cost and they just can't afford it. But hopefully, if we get one school on board, of course, in terms of twenty-four, then that can, you know, with good marketing and kind of, you know, good stakeholders involved, we can open up schools as well in the local area.
That's a great answer, thank you. And councillor Kirkham?
Yeah, just want to come, like, if nobody else, I think my, something they want to add, I just want to say we are being asked to provide our support. Maybe if we could resolve to provide an open letter, a support for the programme, explain.
I have bought a letter. I bought it, obviously if someone would like to sign it, and then we could have your, you know, got on there, so you've got application and partnership.
So just to be clear, you've asked us for money?
That would be my question.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I don't want to shock you, if that's okay. Uh, thank you.
But it was very, it was a little costly. Is it just to kind of show the partnership in the local area?
Yeah, brilliant. That sounds like a really good thing. I mean, obviously, I'm massively encouraged to help show people that. I'd happily propose that this.
Sign it. James, do you want to say?
Yeah, second it, says every favour of supporting somebody's work. Excellent, that's very brilliant.
Yeah, I will email the input through my six.
Yeah, I'll sign it afterwards. Yeah, if you leave it here, then I can sign it and then you scan it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. Fantastic. Thank you very much for your time this evening, for what you're doing for our young people locally, very much appreciate that. We're very free to go. Obviously, you're welcome to stay, but we're also free to leave. So the second presentation, which is out of seven point two on the agenda, is to receive a presentation from Tristan Jones, Director of Port Development AP on the economic impact of the cruise ship port.
Thank you very much, Mayor, councillors for having us here. I think a lot of us have met before. And I'm the Director of Port, but I'm very new to the programme. And I'm joined by Chief Director of Falmouth Fire Commissions. And Jess, let's see, use our cruise pool later, please. So it's been a bit of a joint presentation, you can please sit here. Just trying.
Yes, we are. The wing.
So just to put background on the AP group first of all, just so you understand the context of how cruise is being delivered. Cruise, obviously, it's been the most successful year yet for Falmouth for cruise in terms of numbers. So that's the backdrop to this. But AP, as you know, is not just about necessarily cruise passengers. So I just wanted to give you an overview of the AP group. That is in ownership of the AP business and Falmouth Fox, a wider business, including a time, a tease and a business in Australia. And there's an apprenticeship that you can see at the minute, it's narrated by a time apprentice. So I'd have to forgive that, but we are part of this larger group structure. It adds strength really to what's delivered here in Falmouth. It means it's a very, very large business with backing in peer boards, investing behind it. So when we come to talk about investing in school crews and organising the docks for crews and improving this and stability and things that are being on to at the moment, we've got that strength of backing which really helps. So a large business combined is over one thousand three hundred employees. And I think many of you know, in Falmouth and either other sites, we are very much an engineering business. So although we, you know, we can welcome cruise passengers in, it's not our bread and butter. Our bread and butter is managing projects and doing detailed ship repair and engineering. But cruise is hugely important to business in Falmouth and I'll come on to explain that shortly. Just to summarise what the AP group is all about, there's a little video, which takes about a minute.
AP, AP Australia, power led, continue to take tremendous steps to keep our nation safe. Our team of apprentice graduates are half as many as we do. The ships we build and maintain protect all of us. The Royal Navy, whilst we also make that the world Australian Navy vessels we maintain are ready to protect our crew base and provide vital humanitarian aid to communities across the globe. The ferries, cargoes, tankers and tons we build and refer the UK events for worldwide of responsible transport people and employees around the globe. We will support the renewable sector. We are playing our part in fighting against climate change, building vessels which are forefront of polar ice surge. We are journeying to build a sustainable business for the workforce who are equipped with the skills we need to build and maintain the ships of the future. We are a crew of the next generation of access, graduates and employees that is a wealth of opportunities across our global businesses and shipbuilding, engineering, project management, health, safety and finance, roles which will play major part in our future. We hope you will join us.
Okay, I wanted to show that because it's really important to get the message out there that we want to recruit prisoners. And there is a event at the Maritime Museum on the fifth of February. Put it together, please, and let people know that's not just an apprenticeship, it's also careers day. So we're out there trying to explain to people what the opportunities are in Falmouth Fox for employment in general. Not just apprenticeships, obviously, we're keen to do apprenticeships as well. And I think listening to the gentlemen earlier on, that stem work that they're looking at in schools is so important. And we do so, thanks for that process mission, to get young people inspired about working in these types of roles locally. So good news is, when we get a person, when we have prisoners, we love to say that seventy-two percent of our managing supervisors were prisoners themselves. So it's a good career. Back to cruise, I'll talk about engineering, engineering and cruise, this is where it links up. So in March this year, we had the Belette ship in, that's the Fred Olson's, one of Fred Olson's largest cruise ships. She docked with us in the docks. We had five hundred people working on that ship. Over twelve, was it thirteen, thirteen days, we had to turn that around, learning fluid, putting steel on the bottom of the ship, doing all sorts of things for propulsion systems and so on. That's what AP does. And there is a very strong link between turnarounds we do in cruise, which we'll talk about in a moment, the tenderings we do, the long cycles we do, and this, because we support Fred Olson with long cycles as well. So supporting the dry box is adding value for both parties. So I'm now going to just talk a bit more about the port side of the business, moving away from the ship there. And just getting into the sort of statutory authorities. So in Falmouth, you can be aware that there is two statutory authorities, actually within Falmouth. There's Falmouth Fox Engineering Company, which is the company in AP, and the Falmouth Fire Commissions. And we'll talk you through those areas in a moment. In the areas of Falmouth Fox, we are involved with huge things for cargo. We've got a rail head, we're keen to develop, doing all of the MOD, obviously, the strategic work. There's a French naval vessel coming in this weekend, I can move NATO as well. Casualty reception, as we've seen recently with the Mazurine and other vessels that can be installed alongside, keeping safely in the harbour. And then tourism as well, and that's what we're going to focus on here. So our harbour area is the business, this area is immediately around the docks. But again, the link on that to Martin's is going to tend more about the wider area and how that wider area serves cruise as well. And then we'll come back to the long cycles. I'll hand it over to Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Being your, what we wanted to try and visualize was just to try to, you know, dynamic between how we work in the world here and with, and with our docks. And I always say the easy way to understand what we do, of course, we think of cars as the first of the rest of our daily work and twice that in a single term. We are trustful, we are so different to, to, F-Tech, which is the authority in terms of, so we're trustful. You probably know us quite well, obviously, we're created to, entrusted with the harbour and our job within this, the shareholders, our shareholders are the community and the stakeholders in the community. And any services we make, we invest back in that community, all the hardware itself or our people. So we do somewhat surround AP, and we'll show you a map in a minute, how that works. And I mean, on a daily basis, based operation, it wasn't going to be seen as it is. And the ship operator, he wouldn't notice the difference. But in terms of, we do have quite slightly different roles than it was. And we do a lot of the role around cruise. And we work pretty close to get away and see where AP, or how we go about it, promote a network of cruise. Most of my role in cruise is around tendering, the vessels, the large vessels, visited by an AP, which is quite different. Tendering ship into Falmouth Fox into the same facility that they come with at birth. And these are quite different things that happen in the port, quite different. So this is the map or plan, so this is the main harbour area. AP Falmouth area looks quite small, but actually quite a large part of the inner harbour, including some of the main channel. It comes right into custom packs, keys, dockment, so you can go there. You see the other area is quite a considerable area of sea that we look after. And also look after the pilotage area, so we obviously run the pilotage service. And I'll come back to that in a minute. So I'm trying to set this site out, there's a lot of diesel here, so happy to read the measure. So a lot in there, as you said, most of the cruise ships dock alongside or berth alongside of the docks. And that's what they demand. The reason why we get ships anchored in the bay is there is birthing is not available, not available for that ship of that type or that size. So the preference is always to be in the berth. So anchoring is very much a secondary. There was a lot of growth for cruise demand. Falmouth is incredibly popular, always at the top of the list in terms of the UK business. We're a neat sort of base theme from Southampton, again, for the first day in. We're incredibly popular as far as that goes. But we obviously have both birthing constraints and tidal constraints, that means ships occasionally have to go to the bay. This is a risk to that. So in terms of the anchorage in the bay, you've probably seen the larger vessels inside, smaller vessels anchor in the bay. It is, I'm not trying to overemphasise this, is a secondary position. And increased capacity for birthing would be passenger and operator preferable than ten in the bay. And that's all down to passion, experience, you know, tendering is not ideal, the weather can, even the weather is, this can be clever and that can be a little daunting journey. The time at that distance with the ship and the berth is quite critical for the cruise operator. And so they get on their excursion or shopping or spend time in the town. Some operators don't tender at all, so they simply were tendered due to the, or don't have the sense on the ships to tender on some of them. And it's weather dependent, so we've had, I think, we had three cancellations this year that were due in the bay. And they didn't present because of the weather conditions in the bay. We had one of our best years for visits in the bay, which still had three cancellations. So it is additional, and some people talk about crossroads. Why didn't you, in the good old days, it was, why don't you bring cruise vessels into the crossroads, which is the sort of carrier roads itself? But that's really not those simple for only put some of the smallest vessels. Unless you're picking up the mooring boy, which everyone knows the crossroads, one of them there, does always meet with cruise schedules. So the crossroads boy, anchoring the crossroads, we've done one visit this year where there was a weather issue and the berth was taken to the docks. But that's quite exceptional, and I think you saw the video, it was just, was anchored just off the eastern arm of docks for one particular visit. So we work on, got a lot of hard work on cruise, as you said, I heard the great work earlier on by the ambassadors. They do a great work when they arrive, but some just among, in different avenues, we've got limited resource. We do a lot of work with an organization called Cruise Britain, and I just worked well to cruise Europe. And that dynamic works really well. So we go to regular network, very big operators, big senior executives in the cruise industry. And we've been successful over the last couple of years about promoting destination Falmouth, getting new visits, food, boat, lunch, that's what we do. We sort of work seamlessly with that as well. But the message we get again and again is Falmouth's incredibly popular, but we simply haven't got the capacity in terms of birthing to bring them into the town where the passengers want to be. So possibly the perception, we're hard on our pilotage, our pilotage services for those cruise vessels as well. And one of the things that has come up a lot, and I mentioned earlier, our role is to provide pilotage services. So a pilot does, we run the vessels and we run a pilot out to cruise vessel out on the, on the, almost the end of the division there. They go on the ship and they bring that cruise vessel in safely and then do vice versa with the cruise. It's a fairly serious system, works twenty-four seven. It's quite important because they ride early, so often they're visiting or riding at the pilot station at five or six in the morning to bring them to dock, to get them in at the high tide, to get the passengers out on the excursions and into the town for full day. Also importantly, the most often forgotten, a lot of work is done on the tendering for local support vessels. Both however, another providers locally do a lot of the tendering locally. So there's another additional benefit from tendering away is lots of those local providers, including Cara and others, provide those tendering services for the cruise vessel in. Just one last thing to my perspective around cruise, what we're doing, what we have done in the last year is committed to a brand new Falmouth pilot loan. And that's a way of, this, next year, in July, there's a one point six million pound investment in the port and services. And for me, that's been a very considerable step for us to go forward. And that's the pilotage service, which is critical to support operations on a very, very firm strategy going forward to support cruise and other shipping in the port going forward. So there is a different investment going forward, you don't make these every day of the week. And she'll arrive in July, hopefully some of you will probably see her when she arrives. She'd look be a credible vessel when she comes in. Firstly, on the environment, the bottom line, I made a point there. There is no doubt that cruise is roughly no volume for our point, it was a hard one, forty-four visits this year, just under a thousand overall visits to the port, so very low volume, but it is high value. And that allows us to do a lot more in the port than we would be able to do if we didn't have those visits. Cruise this year for us has been critical to be allowed us to afford to live a lot of awful good in the port around environmental initiatives. I have, this is some of the projects, I might go through them all. I have a full time environmental, so Vicky Swimmer, you've got me, no, he's brilliant. I'm not forced to not have dedicated environmental officers. In part, shipping and cruise plays a bad role. You know, we've been doing, working hard on the seagrass, marking their sea, marking their seashells to stop impact. You know, we have put the bottom round on decarbonisation of our fleet. And next year we'll have electric rib, I heard in conversation earlier from the boss around living on our batteries, we'll have an electric ribbon in our fleet next year, which should be part funded by government. And that will provide part of the cruise services for those vessels to decarbonise in their time. So working incredibly hard to achieve some really good environmental outcomes from shipping. We have this delicate balance between having, trying to keep an environment with the ports, enhancing the port environmentally and keeping that balance between the environment and economy. And that is tricky, but we think we've got the right balance right. And cruise fits into that. You know, our view is, there's a very strong sustainable future for cruise in our operations in Falmouth. The cruise industry is massively changing. If you look at shipping generally, the cruise industry is probably more than any other sector of shipping to decarbonise. industry is probably more than any other sector of shipping to decarbonize, looking at new technologies to reduce the environmental gap. There's still a long way to go and it's getting back that steady, perhaps we've got to try to achieve cruise and the speed of change. Shipping is a very difficult thing to change in terms of decarbonization, but the cruise industry does some incredible work. So some of the ships we receive, particularly the smaller vessels, some of the cleanest near ships on the ocean and some of the clean ships, I'm not saying clean, I'm saying clean airships and others, so there is massive progress, but also in terms of what we're looking at, the industry itself, if you look at some of the work they're doing in terms of diversity in their crews, it's an incredible position, they're doing way more work than many other sectors of industry. So easy to knock, they're in a high profile cruise industry in terms of that, but we feel that if we do it right, then it's an important part, also a core sustainable tourism strategy around it, not having pressure on bed space, but having the vessels that come into the port and doing that. So I think cruise is doing an awful lot to address the issue of the carbon impacts of shipping and we want to work with those cruises going forward. We're already seeing discussions with cruise operators around only ones that visit for us that sort of all share their values of environmental sustainability and obviously that's why they're interested in coming to us. So a lot of work to be done, you know, it's not easy steps, but we believe the cruise industry, working with them, is the right way and obviously the economic impacts for the town and benefits of the town are visible, but you can't read that like, I'll send it around later, if that's okay, I think that's, well, I'll finish and I'll head back to Drissa, why, can I come back and take questions, so thank you for your time.
Thanks, Miles. So moving back onto the docks, there's a lovely picture, he helps it very well, but that's the world and the Viking Jupiter alongside the counting dutch wolves here. So this is showing how the alongside facility is used for cruise, I think we know where they are, but also using the tall ships and I know we've talked about it already, I am going to take this moment and I'm sure you're in Mike, just to show you a video of tall ships using that area, it's only a minute. It's nice just to reflect on that making time, isn't it, and what an amazing experience it was for everyone. For us at the time, you saw the Mazaring in Dry Dock, MOD vessel alongside at the same time, Arca sailing, just tall ships starting and obviously accommodating all of those strands of what we do with the MOD ship, you saw offshore supply vessel, offshore supply vessel there, casualty vessel and tall ships as well. That's how we accommodate cruise very much like that and there's this amazing light show that we did for our horse, or we did, how casual it is, but it's great to see that, lovely pictures. It's an amazing experience for us, very much like cruise, like cruise today. Right, you weren't actually anywhere in the docks, but Jess knows them all because you put them together earlier, so I'm just going to hand it over to Jess to talk to you about really what we're here for, which is the numbers of cruise ships we're seeing coming in at the moment and what that means in terms of passenger numbers and Jess explained what we did this year and what we're looking forward to next year and maybe in the year beyond.
Yeah, just to reiterate from our previous year, we've got 42 cruise ships, 45,000 passengers. We wouldn't have had 65,000 if we didn't get eight cancellations due to the weather and just unfortunate circumstances. Going forward, we're looking at 48 quarts for 2024, which will be another groundbreaking year, and use five turnaround, so that's where Jess could join the cruise ship from Farnham. And then going forward into 2025, we're only at 44 quarts a minute, we're expecting some.
Yeah, very pleased, but to cruise ships, but about two years in advance, the Jackson is really good, it's really good for destinations because they'll know how many people they might have coming through their port in two years, so it really helps with that planning. And the numbers next to Jess in terms of.
Yeah, if you just go, we're at 75,000.
So maybe 75,000 passengers next year, if all the ships come, there is always this risk around the ones that take them in, but that's potential and the output of that in terms of economic output, if everyone spends a hundred pounds, that's 7.5 million pounds. Whether people do spend a hundred pounds or not is debatable, even if it's half of that, even a quarter of that, even if it's 25 pounds a person, that's an awful lot of revenue that we can bring in to Farnham and surrounding the area. I'm not talking there about the additional things that I was mentioning, which is the passenger vessels, the shuttle buses we use, the taxi companies that use all that on top of that, plus obviously income from private boat services, chargers on the nerves and the sport to all their businesses. And cruise is as important to ourselves as it is to clarify the fisheries, it helps underpin the business, it helps us get stability, seeing growth in cruise really helps us with that visibility of our income going forwards, it helps us therefore recruit apprenticeships, knowing that we've got that strong security income going forward. So I can't underestimate how important cruise is for Ayrshire. We're really keen to have a turnaround and we've done this before, this was when we had the Fred Olson turnaround back in 2014. You can see how we branded the facility to include the town, we're really keen to do that, continue doing that, a lot of signage in the docks, we can see the town, we want to make sure that happens going forwards. This year we invested, upgraded terminal, branded it all for our master, make a lot of effort to make sure that turnaround's very well, Jess has an absolute serving job with making that happen. And the cruise of master, as you mentioned already, they are so important. Cruise, cruise calls like any, like any job, you're only as good as your last job, you're only as good as your last critical, the aim has to make sure that when the, as you said back when she said, we're really good reports and then the cruise ships come back. So I've got one more video, last video, this is the ambition cruise called Ayrshire Farnham. Let's join marketing and our master cruises because we need to make a success for them. So we're doing as much work as we can around rifles in Farnham, it's a stunning day, if we can help promote their cruises, then it's good for everyone. Most people, everyone I speak to has been on a cruise with our master from here, says it must be amazing, so you know, if we all can get on cruises, we know if it's going to help everyone and by our master, we're keen to promote that. Right, very, I'm going to finish off quickly now with where this is taking us. So in my role of port developer wise, we are keen to make sure we grow cruise and we grow opportunities around floating offshore wind in the future, which has been mentioned already around skills and apples and those, we want to make sure we keep the core business running as well. I mean, we effectively do what we did for tall ships on a bigger scale in terms of other markets as well. So we have an enterprise zone on site and we've been working through, you'll notice some environmental impact assessments, this is a scripty report for the proposed development, I'm happy to talk to anyone about that in detail. And just recently we've had some funding to carry out the zero emissions vessel infrastructure, shore power scheme, which is the symbol largest investment there in the docks for about 40 years, upgrading our electrical systems, make sure we can plug ships in alongside and reduce their emissions in port. So this is all leading to us being able to be a green port in the future. And the scheme that we've got in scope in that you, I'm sure you will see on our planning website and so on, helps us accommodate cruise better, it helps us accommodate floating offshore wind water, it helps us accommodate cruise, gets us more modern facilities, modern facilities with things like shore power going forwards, stronger laws, all these things that ships need for alongside and are the key so that we can be similar in some ways to port and port. That's it, that's it for now.
Thank you very much for that, that's really informative. I've got councillor Reva first, then Sormby, then Evans on the next.
Thank you. Just to say that my dad used to work down the docks in the seventies with nearly lots of them, okay? And over the last few years with my position as the mayor, I've been able to work with them and I see the ambition and the future of the docks, which brings attention and workforce as well. And I think it's absolutely fantastic what you're doing there now. Meeting the crew, I started there, met a few cruise ships, as you know, with my position, Jess has there know where there are that and a couple of them smiling away and everybody comes off those ships, they said they love to come to Farnham and it's a lovely place, it's a lovely welcome, it's so good, I'm actually going on that ship on cruise in April. But I just want to thank you for what you do on behalf of Farnham and also when it was Queen's Jubilee, I went down to docks and tried to fund some money for the tea party in the Princess Pavilion. And before I could get there, they said how much did it cost, I said two and a half thousand and I was trying to ask for 500 and they said, yeah, we'll give you two and a half thousand. So they gave me that and that was really good and that was a fantastic day and everybody did, it was like kids meeting each other in their teens for a long time, it was great. And I just want to say to Miles as well, I always say in the harbour, commissioners of harbour masters are closed shop until you took over and you've made us very welcome and we can then see you anytime, that's never been offered before and I thank you for that because we all need to move together and I just think we're going in the right direction and it's just shared.
Thank you councillor, I was going to say something very similar, I don't need to now, but thank you very much for that. Yeah, great, I've got councillor Sormby, did you want to sit at the table?
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right, you're welcome to move to the table if you'd like to councillor Sormby.
With the ships getting bigger and I understood the reason why the big ones are going to come to Farnham because the channel doesn't deep enough, it's the old chestnut of dredging. Would that make a significant, was possible, would that make a significant in your business?
So we've put forward post development in the environmental scheme, we're not convinced that we're in, at the moment with review and there's environmental access going on around that. There is some dredging, but it's only on the nerves, it's only on the berth pockets themselves. So it's modernizing the keesites, making sure that through the low water period, the ships can sit there alongside, but it does not include any dredging of the channel because we are, we believe, having done an assessment of the cruise ship market and the depth of the cruise ships and the numbers that there are and the frequency they pass and where they go from to, and the fortunate position we're in around high ice, spring high tide cycles and Farnham tends to be in the morning and evening, it fits really well with cruise actually. So we believe we can access a lot of this market without really any dredging to the channel and just doing some proper dredging alongside nerves, which is what we've put forward in our proposal. So again, a sustainable, sensitive approach to cruise in this market and other markets as well.
Thank you, councillor Evans.
Thank you, a very interesting presentation, thanks all three of you. It's quite clear that the link between Farnham and the docks and hope it continues. I was interested to hear, you were talking briefly about onshore power connections, because obviously there's been a lot of concern about more cruise lines. It's been said that a big cruise line, it can be like 30 odd bags and lobbies, I can obviously not so that we want to. Can you tell us a little bit more about your proposals there, especially are there any regulations that can help you to propose it?
I think the regulations are changing and ships are getting cleaner and ships have to abide by certain international regulations. What we're doing with the ZEBI scheme is we are, we're upgrading the facility to be able to provide a level of power up to the level of power we get into the facility basically. So we're going from potentially up to six MVA of power and we're looking at plugging it up to 1.5 megawatts or MVA, which is two per vessel. Now, that is not enough for a large, very large cruise ship, it's enough for a small cruise ship and it's enough for inside board flings, so we're best to want that alongside everything. This is the first phase, as we said, you have these things in the statements, but it's a step in the right direction, it's a extremely significant extent, it's going to change the case. We're going to have to live by March 35 and then we're going to try out phase three years to start the project. So I think during that time of obviously further elements in cruise ships and what they're going to do to become even cleaner. And you do know that some ports have been able to get shore power and bring in large cruise ships and I think that's sort of where we're maybe going to have to get, but it's constant at the time. At the moment we're actually have all the large cruise ships, it's a progressive, a certain direction. All of the power we buy in the facility comes from clean energy, so it cleans up with key, well, I think it's vessels where we can.
Are you saying that you're limited to what you can actually get?
Yeah, there's a cabling restriction at the moment for what we can supply, but that doesn't mean to say in the future.
I was, you should have said, sorry councillor, I should have said, sorry. Sorry.
It doesn't mean to say in the future that we can't operate that and have increased capability coming to site to get classes of ships. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Miles, do you want to come in?
Just a little bit more, the basic challenges of decarbonization, the port harbor, we're working, again, we are part of the, of the culture free compliance, we're the one of the most modern division part of the country, we're looking to run our vessel on HBO, like a federal fabric, which is fat in a number of things, they're standing in fuel as well, as much as we can do regardless, you say, of an electric grid that we ride with the ports, again, it's in a fundamental grid, we're keeping up with new technology and electric vessels that are harboring the next year. So we're working, again, we are to decarbonize our total operation from Farnham by 2030, we're hitting those steps we can do, so our part of the set, hopefully we're moving towards a comfortable position in terms of fuel use or going forward and we're getting some plenty of ports, the whole operation, we're working well with the docks, looking at social operation from Farnham being the cleanest it possibly can. There'll be a long way to be done, certainly totally clean, just a lot of challenges, but the technology we use to take that steps and we're making hopefully fairly good strides towards that.
Thank you, that's really useful to hear and I'd echo what councillor Reva said, you know, the relationship is stronger, you can see you're doing all the right things, you know, you're a really great cohort to be pushing, particularly a sustainable approach forwards and you can see that you really mean it, so that's really refreshing. Councillor Kirk, thank you for the last one. Councillor Kirk, thank you for the last one.
The first I was going to ask exactly that, so that's brilliant that you're moving in that direction. I was going to ask the barrier, what the barriers are to that, is it the grid? Why can we not scale it up more quickly and what percentage, so the cruise ships obviously bring generators and generators, what percentage reduction do you think is still great to the use of those generators on those big cruise ships? One of the questions was if we have more ships, will it impact on your emissions in other areas and the floating offshore winds and in the work that you do with the naval ships, there's obviously there's a balance there, that work is incredibly important to provide those jobs and that work scaling up to Farnham. And the other question was really a more kind of aesthetic one, when people come off the ships, so it's quite a walk into town, obviously, but it might not be improved or anything, but the nicest commute to Farnham isn't it, that first few yards, I was going to ask if there's any work going on to to kind of do up back into town, maybe some of the transport into town, we, I think we put some money into tourist information in town, just if you're considering kind of investing into those areas in the town as well.
I'll go, I'll try and say this, if I can remember them, probably the last one first. So, yeah, the the fortunate moment around county, the county ward, the county ward, they can walk straight into town or they can get short shuttle ride. We, but we also recognise that we need to in the future use multi berths as we do now and and with modern berths, they may be in a slightly different location if they're larger, so it will be probably tendered, sorry, bussed in from a berth to to town, which basically what happens at the moment. So there is a, that's safer that way than walking through a large commercial cycle. It's what happens in other ports as well. There will always be a mix of operations going on in port and cruise passengers are used to seeing that, they're used to seeing cargo as well, that's all the, those things have to happen because we're a political location, we have to move cargo as well and other ships need to be alongside. So what we are trying, what we're all trying to do, let this start, is for example, there's a big glass cargo bay, we'll try and explain to the passengers what it is, it's actually gross glass being moved out in a very sustainable way rather than lorries to harbor, it's done by ship. So we'll try and explain what it is and we'll try and make it better that way so that it makes some sense. But, yeah, we need to do all the soft stuff around signage and continue that and make sure that the reception is considered. The other question was around.
What percentage should we make from ships and generators?
Yeah, difficult question to answer, but I think part of that question was around how can we, how can we do more than six MVA? And the answer, the answer would be funding. At the moment, we're, we're very lucky to be able to get this funding to do the first stage, but I would hope in the future there will be further funding rounds coming through that will help us then move to the next, the next phase, working with Western Power to to have a margin cable system in. I love that.
There was a question on current levels.
A lot of polling. Combining different markets, yeah. The, that's what the port plan is all about, is giving us the additionality in space to accommodate floating offshore wind and and MOB and and crews as well. There's seasonal differences there, there's sometimes a season's work and there'll be a, there'll be a limit on what we can do in certain areas, you know, there'll always be a limit, there'll be a limit to how many cruise ships we can take, there'll be a limit to how many cruise ships we can take. Well, it's important, the business has a full heady story and there's lots of, lots of different sectors being dedicated for, that's what we're going to see, this is diverse. It's really cool.
Also have volatility with our harbor, you know, this port is incredibly diverse, there's never a same value, obviously, you see the variety of ships we get, we don't have any scheduled services, areas and everything, so we work really hard on a main basis to serve those different ships, including a lot of container ships from the market to the bay, the services to to other much smaller vessels, so and all those we need to see growth in, you know, this port needs growth, it's necessary, it's not nice to have, I need growth, I can't continue to see the same operation, my operation going forward, where I see some growth in crews is critical to that, as is floating offshore wind, add in some of the other services around superdocks and private dots, so all this needs growth, we can't continue to have that because it, we need to see something in terms of the economic activity on the port and the revenues we receive with the port, we're increasing it for safety in terms of what needs doing to that, and we will do much, much better on the port around our environment and do much, we will step up in terms of that, obviously we have trouble locally forwarding to do that. So we're doing lots of small baby steps, of course I will step up, but that's depending on revenue. There's a harbor you see, revenue is growing, floating offshore wind is a really good example of that, I wouldn't say that, I think part of the business is around accumulating that, we've got huge potential around the support of that industry, it's been for twenty, thirty years, our young people are found, should be a benefit for that, they're already started to start this conversation, but we've got to have infrastructure investment and we've got to see what, I was all going to piece it one. I'm not going to dramatise around that, but I'm not completely bound, this is my harbor, who I employ and less have grown and crews, we've got that, but we have an extended future.
Brilliant, thank you, I think we've taken up enough of your time, thank you so much for coming and talking us through all that, it's been really informative and do feel free to say all you want to. Thank you so much for your time, thank you, thank councillors, we all got great questions. And we're moving on to item eight, some questions I believe that's not received, I do, I'm going to shift around the agenda a bit at this point because I'm mindful there's people waiting to speak, we'd probably rather go, so I'm going to move up item fifteen to now, which is the EEOs, if you, if you happen to go next, we can go on the way you were just saying this morning, so thank you.
Yeah, great.
Do you want to go to the end of the tape so we can see, is that okay? Thank you. Turn the projector off, you don't have a blue light in your eyes.
Yeah, I have a, please.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thanks so, so much for having us cover the report, what we've been doing. So this is my report for the month of November, going a little bit into December, both in November, what we've been doing within our jobs, with the environmental issue, obviously for Farnham Town Council, for those of you that don't know. So the things we've been doing with, is as far as, first things is our bonfire night controls and these controls we've been doing for many, many years, so the last four years we've been doing them, that's been actively controlling until about midnight on bonfire night, the control of all of our beaches, making sure they're safe and clean for everyone to use, we have been actively with our fire brigade, as I mentioned earlier, going out a block before bonfire night, speaking to our schools and our universities and our local community groups to let them know about the boards of our beaches and how we don't let our open fires on our beaches. So we've gone from three years ago, from having madness of having about thirty open fires on our beaches, to this year, we have one, which is absolutely amazing, so thrilled. And it's amazing to be seeing our people welcome down the beaches, we even had one person, one group of our young students sitting around with their iPad with a virtual fire, yeah, and one fire we did find was down on Mayport Beach and that was only for some people in their forties, which should remain better, who were starting with lots of friends and they started to make their bonfire, but they were lovely, we engaged with them, we explained the reasons why we don't have on our beaches and they gradually cleared it all away and went back on our boat and it was all gone. So it was a real, real result this year, so we're really glad we were able to have people found for really helping us look after our beaches and keep them nice and safe for us all to enjoy. So recently in November, we've joined the baking space for sand conference and went up there, learning about what Cornwall Council is doing to protect our beaches for things like coastal erosion, rising tides, et cetera, and we heard about their cans and things there. We also joined the national homeless count twenty twenty-three, so at midnight, we went to Jankov, we were there, very tired, were we, it was a very wet, rainy day, it was raining with relentless, but we checked the whole of Farnham, it's in ways, we were out and about, every single quarter of Farnham, we were checking to see counting anybody that was homeless on on that evening. So, yeah, thank you Jane, for coming out and helping us with that, we really appreciate it, it's lovely, a big lot of volunteers came out and helped us with that. Moving on with our homeless engagement, we've engaged with Salvation Army, okay, and with the fire brigade as well, they've been joining us as well, so we're going along to that outreach, which is on a ten o'clock on a Monday morning and a Thursday, I believe, and going along, I'm just meeting them, that's open for anybody, so all of you are welcome to pop in on there on any of those times, have a cup of tea or a cup of coffee after breakfast, and we're just talking to the people in there, just making sure that everyone, if they need anything from us, really, if they need anything community things, and we're there with Cornwall Council and our beach, so petrols and everything, so we're there providing really good support, we've got really good, it's really helped us support our local people, which may have additional means which we need to support within our community and it's made us, our communication with them is out and about and dealing with them much easier because we're seeing them in the morning over a cup of tea and we can talk to them on a real human basis, so, but that's ongoing, we're enjoying that, that kind of new piece of work. We've been, we've gone along to the beach management meeting as well, so I won't tell you too much about that, but we are just connecting other agencies to look after our beaches because we are obviously passionate about our beaches and we want to keep them beautiful and clean. So we've just been working with some seaweed removal potentially and also working with BIFRA, so bringing them into that meeting as well, so that our next meeting, we'll have some new faces on that meeting to look at how going into twenty twenty-four, we can all work together to look after our beaches going forward. Keeping on our beaches, the theme of our beaches, we have had a few spillage, sewage spills recently, mainly one we have, we're doing our water testing, we do the water testing on our streams coming into our beaches and test the water, checking if they're clean, have any spills going in, alerting by them to the public, no worrying about people in the sea and they've been submerged out and checked, I don't have one, so we're down on Pili Bay's beach and some of the two beaches that had spills on that day, speaking to them to the public, the breakfast, we're just advising them, obviously they want to go in, we can't stop them, but we can advise them that there has been a spill, we're dealing with that. If you're raised with us, during the summer, all of the beach operatives, there's a lot of people that manage our beaches, that's our capex and people from each of the car for our beaches, they're managing those beaches during summer, they get notification from the environment agency, if it flashes up and says, there's a spill and they have to put our sign. That unfortunately finishes, end of October, that finishes, so during our winter months, we have lots of locals around swimming in the water, we never get access to them, we have a big wall time of accidents, they have no responsibility on those at the moment to display that sign and so we're working with our local capex owners and things, yeah, yes, I'm, I'm a junior, to encourage them to put that sign out, we're going to check daily, check daily if there is a spill to make sure that it's signed up because we're working to protect us, we need to look after each other, especially in our weather, to use our beaches, I'm waiting on Saturday, we need to get those signs up, really unfortunate, I am really aware that a lot of work is going on to our beaches, especially Thorpe, there's lots of daily investigations and testing going on at the moment, I know there's lots of exciting plans, so there's a lot of work in the background that's going to help alleviate this problem going forward, it's obviously a bigger picture, that's just, obviously we're reactive in our role and we just deal with things of the role of it for the day. So we can do, oh, it's just a car seat, we dealt with a few ABS issues, one in our cemetery, that was absolutely brilliant, I'll say a big thank you to our local police team and the co-op as well, really difficult solid issue we had in our cemetery, bumping into our other police team and co-op and had to get some footage and dealing with that issue and that has dealt with quite a lot of the police teams, so please, it really shows that when we all work together as as our council, our police teams and our local businesses, we really have solved these quite quickly when we work together. Just as much in November, our, November twelve, thirteen, fourteen, we have had a influx of our regular remaining, co-horts, we call them, arriving in town, we've been engaging with those, as you can imagine, and moving them off outside, especially outside their businesses, so people are coming to over in the morning and things, so they can get into their premises. The ongoing issue, we are dealing with it and, yeah, we are, we are working with our other, other teams across into Truro and Catmore as well, so we're really engaging with those teams, we're keeping links of where we see movement going and everything and we're all working together, so we've done a piece of work, it's, it's ongoing and that is one piece that we're, that is ongoing at the moment. We've been, as we recall, earlier you were speaking to them, we've also been lots of work in Red School, they're able to build up a lot of rapport there recently, so we've been up there, we went to their careers day, we used to talk a couple of weeks ago, didn't we, about our jobs and how we got here and how we work with our council and our team here, and we were talking about our cultural apprenticeship that we have available and really just talking about the world, it's just, we really, we absolutely loved it. We've also got Lily, which is of the, Marie's small, she's out, she's coming with us with work experience once a week.
She works every Thursday, she's amazing as well, so she's really enthusiastic to help as well.
She is, yeah, it's really nice now, we've got those readings through the community that are coming as well and we're looking after our young people in this role really, we just want to hire some young people, really give support that they need, so that's really enjoyable, we're really enjoying working alongside her. We've also been at Farnham School as well, we went to their careers day as well, so we've been talking to students and things there as well, again, our apprenticeship is quite available, but also just meeting and meeting, we know a lot of our students anyway, who do go in regularly to Farnham School to do talks and things, so we are very familiar with our young people, so it was lovely to go and spend the day with them at Farnham School as well. We're also supporting the Christmas lights which on, it's very cold, didn't see much of it, did we, we had an incident, we had sweat happen that week on that night, that's where Cornwall Council come in, no one should be sleeping rough on the street that night because the temperature had gone down, it was really, really cold that night, unfortunately we did have one gentleman that missed being picked up, we were ready to coordinate with Cornwall Council and we managed to get him into a hotel overnight, so that was a really good piece of work, with the town team as well, so I must, must say a big thank you to the town team as well, getting that sorted from that evening because it was very, very cold, it was just two degrees or something. We've also been working across country, we go to a cross-country vehicle meeting, this is people that live in vans, so it's a new thing, a lot of people haven't got cars, it's housing at the moment, are living in their vans, even though it's winter, it's cold. So I'm looking currently across Somerset, Devon, Bristol and Wiltshire, that's it, we're talking together frequently and we're looking at these issues that we're having, so it's really getting lots of information, lots of intel about, about how people live, how people are coping, cold weather in vans and things, so it's, it's great to be part of that and to realise we're ongoing and it's really great and lots of tips and things going forward. And we're just working with our community, so that isn't enforcement or anything, that's working with them and advising people, for a lot of people don't know or maybe don't know, especially if they're previously moved down back out to present their rubbish correctly. So we're doing a lot of work as well as going out on Tuesday morning, we're working a bit more really closely now, we're looking at education program next year, they'll come at us into our schools and community next year to do it and join education together. Unfortunately, had quite a bit of graffiti through town recently, a huge spout split round, again, the old working development business teams on that and have been working to remove it all, it should all now be removed. We are looking at on doing some very, very early morning patrols, two AM, three AM patrols going forward, just to be a visual presence, just seeing, seeing who's out and about at that time, but that's something going forward into January. One part of that work is really, really monitoring our young people's behaviour and building relationships with them, so being out and about, with a visual presence and talking with those young people, being a little positive role model for them, we've built up, we're very lucky now, aren't we, and again, if you're such a celebrity when you're out and about, we do too, we're working about, it's lovely now, they're seeing us out and about, they'll come up to us, they're engaging with us, even as of an evening, we're able to talk to them about maybe diet pains and things, element hats, something for nights, popular rugby, but also we have to talk to them, we can move groups on successfully, we can get them to care, we can still put things in the bin and just expect them about the bigger picture, we've only got that because we're going to the schools and that, we've got a relationship with them and that starts. with them and that starts from the primary schools going through. So that's what's going on for the last three years and we're just now starting to see the reward from all of that work now because we really are getting to know our young people. So that's really, really lovely. We're doing quite a bit of work around babes at the moment, we're working, getting with the Fire Brigade on looking at disposable babes, obviously these disposable babes, we're finding them down our drains which go straight out to the sea, we're finding them, you know, disposable, we also got a problem, as the Fire Brigade said, with them exploding in our bins on refugee day. So one thing we're looking about, if we are out and about and choosing more than, and we do have a spill, if we are finding disposable babes in people's rubbages, we're logging that and we're going around to visit them at a later date, during daytime we're having a, having a conversation, a real conversation with them about the babes, re-educating them on the babes and danger of this, a lot of people just don't think, oh, they're disposable, why don't they put them in the bin? Babies are not disposable, even things that say they're disposable, they're not disposable, they have many, many cars in there, they need to be completely taken apart, the bathroom removed. So we're just talking to people about that, advising them on how to safely dispose of babes and how that looks like, so that's, I'm sorry, ongoing piece of work. We've also been doing, sorry, it's a lot of information, doing a lot of work around cigarette disposal in the town as well. So we've been working with our local marine groups and we've got some funding and we've got a busy team that's called Special Buck Tins. You might see this about, this weekend, you'll hang a lot out this weekend. So if you see anybody out and about smoking, we're engaging them before we're cigarette goes on the ground, we're based about giving them the tins and asking them if they'd be responsible or look after the environment, we explain to them if that buck goes down our drain, it goes straight out to the sea, it doesn't go through any filtration process. So we're asking them to put the bucks out in a tin, put these on a disposable bit when you get home or in a public bin. That's really working really well. We do, we really believe that you can't tell someone off for doing something or ask them to change their behaviour if you don't give them tools to be able to do it. That's really worked really lovely, we're happy, we come back to it and they say, thank you so much for that, really appreciate it. You don't get much free in life, do you? So that's one thing we're out and about. If anyone knows of any community groups or anything that we do with this reward, we try and pass it by them to our beach cafes, restaurants, so they can have it and, as well. One great, huge piece of work, again, thanks to the Marine Schools as well, is a whole group, we had forty-five of the Marine School come out with us and across this lane, this is a lane that goes from down to town station up to the university campus. I can't believe I'm in the future, it's so popular, lots of people got it, really unloved, it was all popping around, we had forty-five of students from the Marine School came out with us all day, actually in the morning, it's late in the morning in the afternoon, literally cleared it all back, took all the grandmas out, cleared it all back, they made fun hotels, we planted lots of gold, wild gold and snow cones and native British bluebells and some daffodils on the top area, which is one of the re-roads areas, not in the mentor area. Really gave it a good tidy and it was lovely, working with them.
I checked the other day, but honestly it still wasn't as lovely, it was just really nice to see, wasn't it?
It was nice, the members of the public were coming down, they were just coming up to us and students weren't, they thanking them and everything, so I think it's really nice to see how the young people really coming out and committed. They enjoyed it that much, they now want to come and do something once a term. So I think they're next to doing their up and up, they're coming up to Mendenham, Mendenham Point with us to do a project up there, so that's ongoing with those now there, which is absolutely lovely.
That's amazing.
I think, sorry, I think that's, I probably forgot a few things. That's our team, they've got, they've gone now, also working with babes and cigarettes as well, we've got baby taking lots of things away.
Amazing.
And discs as well, we're working with our police teams and our town team on the new disc recording system, so we are just starting trying it. Anyway, that's it.
That's amazing.
Just want to thank you everybody for your support, because I know also you can see us when you're out and about, you all come and you all help, but yeah, we really appreciate your support.
Well, we appreciate you and it just goes to show how much effort does we rewards, like you and I were picking up nails on beaches five years ago, like for hours on end and like one fire, like that's amazing, look at the impact of actually putting the time in with those young people in schools and doing that work visually over again, is that actually is now starting to really benefit the town, so that's amazing, thank you for that. Really like the human first approach for the Salvation Army, the people that were rusty evening and stuff, that's something we should all be doing, you're a human before you're anything else. And you wouldn't say it yourselves, but I know that you drove that person that was on the street from Famas to Truro to their place, so you go above and beyond all the time and I'm so grateful for you two and the work that you do, you're really quite incredible, so thank you for all your time and effort. Is anybody going to give me quick questions? My four, number eight of twenty-four, we're two hours in, I'm going to go to the map first.
That's a nice place.
There's only one question, I don't know if you can answer to your company, your company in Cheltenham. Can they ask, can we look at people around for, like you did this, the cheque?
I can't give out that information.
I thought I'd like to get some, just interested.
And to see councillor Kirk, can you be out a minute?
Just what you said about driving people and going out at two o'clock in the morning, please be careful.
We are, we're very, very careful, yeah, we are, we are there, everyone knows that we're around, so we don't want to worry, so it is, everyone knows that we're around.
Well, thank you so much for everything your team do, you're a small but very mighty team of two and we very much appreciate just how much you do and how far you get into the bones of Famas, it's really quite incredible. And so thank you so much, you're very free to go home, you've got a day start tomorrow, I'm sorry, it's Monday, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number nine, which is the police report, we're up finally, we're two hours, how, forty-five minutes, I'm sorry.
So, good evening everybody, we've worked with the crime task in 2023, maybe three twenty-five minute power session. Just very quickly, very briefly, we worked, some of this is going into November, we're going to enter this month, Halloween, Bonfire Night, but even though we were supposed to be here for the Christmas lights switch on, we personally got involved in a war on which fairly slowly started quite quickly, so we worked the town, I think PCSO began November and Christians, the sergeant was there. We've been here longer than being part of the Remembrance Sunday Service, Johnny Edgar Reef. We've worked with, I'm trying to think, we've worked with Evanantial, Swambull, we had some proceeds of crime funding, Paul Stevenson, PC Paul Stevenson responsible for securing that funding, had people who need help, fair to say, attending those sessions, we go along as police with them and try and help out, school visits, Famas Primary. And I promise I'll come back to you on two things, last meeting we discussed two people we're working on, had results for both, one slightly more successful than the other. The first one was a prolific shoplifter who went with, I think, I have this in mind, I would want to point it. I won't mention the young man's name, he's been through court, he's had his court proceedings, so I'm not going to rephrase his name again, it's not relevant, but he was prolific, he's part of the crew down at Boscombe Fields and some issues we've had there, so definitely a key figure. We wanted a criminal behavioural order, we didn't get one unfortunately, but we did get a nine-month youth referral order to be required, electronic demons of curfew from seven PM to seven AM. Compensation for the victim wasn't really looking forward, wanted in the honesty, but nice to have, he's lost time at work. The chap with Edward was for, I shouldn't say the very beginning, was for quite a real nasty assault, he was one of two. So yeah, restraining order, got to contact the victim, I won't mention their name and address and area he's not allowed to go to, so it was quite a significant charge for a seventeen-year-old. We were hoping to get the criminal behavioural order because that would have really helped us with upcoming policing through the summer and the seafront, the Gillingbays, Boscombe Fields, but we didn't get that order, but if it comes again, we will just put it straight back in again, play for it again. And the second result was for a prolific shoplifter, please tell me, I'm repeating myself, I do quite a bit, I don't dig yet the result, we had criminal behavioural order and it lasted three years, which was fantastic, I will mention his name because he deserves it, it was in court, so it's open for public knowledge, it's chap Ronald Jones. And he's prevented from entering the area known as Famas Town Centre except for passer on public transport or to attend a professional appointment, which prior appointment can be provided. So basically what we were looking for was the ban from Famas Town Centre to give retailers and more importantly, the employees that are on the shop floor some space to not be scared of working with a six foot six shoplifter who used to go in brazenly, held himself quite literally, thousands and thousands and thousands of collat from each stall, it was a joke really, but he's now banned for three years, he's banned from entering any shop, supermarket shop, etc, or any other commercial premises, fortunately now he's banned and I personally, he's got his shop at the moment. He's maybe there, he's got a leg, I'm afraid, on refusing to leave any shop, supermarket shop, etc, or any other commercial premises, once asked to leave by member staff, owner or security guard. So we deal with sentences all the time, we get to hear them, and that one is really quite significant, three years from Famas Town Centre, quite a large impact on his human rights and how he's able to move, but I would suggest on this occasion, well deserved. And we've got a few couple more projects from leaving town, they were trying to tackle a couple of other shoplifters and hopefully we'll be able to leave that to you that very shortly. Unfortunately, we're not such a good note, we've been looking at the image we've had for our chap for criminal damage, I'm not aware that anybody's recognising yet, I don't, Johnny doesn't, the family favourite team generally are the people that see people on the ground and we don't recognise this individual, which is frustrating, but it doesn't mean you want to be recognised by somebody else. I'm sure you're aware, with criminal damage and spraying stuff, it's really difficult to police a cap at any time, anywhere, they tend to pick, generally tend to pick places that haven't got CCTV and to be honest, we're struggling a little bit with that. If we do get an ID, we're looking forward to it and do what we can.
That really, for us, I think, is it. Great, is there really any questions?
Just talking about the twenty minute camp presentation.
I think I appreciate that, I'll be honest, you're losing a little bit here, but thank you very much and thanks for coming along, obviously you're welcome to stay, but you... Yeah, that's fine, if you say you're okay, Mox, so thank you very much. Brilliant, okay, moving on, because we're going to try and get the rest of it as quickly as possible, we've been here three to four hours, we've got quite a lot of hours left. So next up is the Community Network Manager. Oh, yeah, sorry, you are on my list, you've all done a hat bear trade, would you like to jump up my list from number eighteen to number ten? Sorry, I forgot you, you're behind the door there, you are on my list.
I'm sorry we were late.
Oh, it's okay, don't worry.
I've got a lot of time, we've changed.
Don't worry.
I couldn't, I just made the assumption that it's seven.
Oh, it's okay.
It's worked out okay.
Call Doctor Paul, please do here, I'm not going to read through the board of the report, I'm sure you'd like to hear, but I just wanted to just highlight a couple of things. In the report, we talked about the support the small scale farmers need, so and, you know, we asked, I don't know, do whatever you can to support them. And I mentioned, we mentioned in there the climate justice, as it's called, with farmers, you know, the whole issue of the impact of climate, the climate crisis on farmers is huge and they need their support. So in the report, we put, can you sign, if you can spare the time to support the climate justice petition as it's going on, because we need, although this money's been promised, this loss of damage, it's going to take a while, it's going to go, and so the support we show as individuals, that may push things along because they need it now. So just that, the other thing I just wanted to mention was, Famas Pen and Festivals Week, spent, we had a couple of days on each campus, about three days on one and two on the other over two week period, and it was a fantastic experience. So, you know, we want to develop that relationship that we've got with the students and the university, we want to build on that as much as we can. So I'm just mentioning that now because it's, for us it's a big deal to have that relationship. The other thing I want to mention is we want to have bear trade in the town, so if there's local events going on, that we can have that visibility, we want to be able to do that if we have the time. For a small group, it's difficult to fit everything in. But, you know, for instance, like the tea festival, we haven't had a tea festival since before, and that was a great day for bear trade and all the other things that are going on in town to be visible. Same with Front Palace, we used to do the refreshments at Front Palace, again, it's something for us to be involved in that we already used to do. So yeah, so just making, we're just putting that out there that we want to be involved in the town as much as possible. And we also want to visit the hotels and, you know, try and get some information together about how much bear trade is available in the hotels, so we can do some kind of flyer that will give us a bit of information and people, visitors to town will go, those hotels where, and retailers where they can get bear trade, they will do. I think that's about all really, and I, as I mentioned here about twenty twenty-five, because Famas became a bear trade town in two thousand and five, so that'll be twenty years in twenty twenty-five and it'd be nice to do something special for us for twenty twenty-five and things take a while to plan, so just putting it out there at the moment. We'll talk about it in our rooms and looking back to the council and see what we can do together because, as I say, we're a small group, it's difficult for us to organise anything new on our own, together we can do something.
Okay, thank you. Fantastic, thank you. Is there any questions? Thank you for, is there anybody questions? No, thank you so much for giving your time and all the work that you guys do and yeah, very happy to talk about twenty twenty-five, it would be great to do a celebration. Thank you so much, I'm going to take a bit of a break and just take a second for a minute.
Thank you everyone, next is the Community Network Manager.
Apologies, Community Network Manager, but the minutes from the video card is attached there for selecting.
Thank you. Yeah, I note that there is reference to the Melville Road crossing, which has hundred thousand pounds was way outside the funding available, but the report says that the town council has agreed that this scheme should be included in a local transport plan twenty twenty-five plus programme. I just wondered, that scheme doesn't, Cornwall Council admits that that scheme doesn't need guidance, and I just wondered when that was agreed by the council?
Yeah, I think that's no amount of feedback in that one.
So it is, it has not been agreed by the council?
I'm not aware of that, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, you'll make the report then, please. Next is Cornwall Council reports, councillor Sorensen, would you like to say first?
Yes, thank you much, I'll look at this one. Beginning, I'll take a look at everyone, please, they are going to take it down, so for hanging, the characters are coming right over, you know, so that's one. Tree cutting at the back of Nowis Place, the trees, this belongs to Cornwall Housing and it's touching the sides of the houses, so they're coming to cut that back. Disappointed to hear that bus shelter, I believe, I'm not going to name the company, but it was demolished by a delivery van and the town council are going to look into replacing that one because it is well used by the public. Yeah, it is well used by the public, especially in raining, and so I think it's something needs replacing. We're still waiting for the appeal for cinnamon regarding the two top fields that separate Famas and Dudo. I don't know why they're dragging it out, there must be something going on in the back fence, there's appeals have come along, but this one seems to be outstanding and I'm going to say no news is good news at this stage, that Dudo being named a safe community from Famas because those fields are built on and then it becomes jointed ahead, so to speak, and as far as I know, it's going to be a subject with Famas, but no, it doesn't happen. Move on a bit now, Haylon Way shops, now these shops have been, not being used for a long, long time, maybe a couple of years now at least, I put it to the portfolio, however I call them council, and you can look into converting these two shops into possibly two flats because they, make them cancelled flats because they do sit underneath a block of cancelled housing. So he's going to look into this one and try and push it forward. So he's going to look into this one and try and push it forward. But we're going to just drag it on and on and on, you know, just to get it done. Uh, I suppose you have noticed a water leak outside the Falmouth fire station, maybe a week or so ago, but there was an puddle there. And so I had to contact the water board and, uh, there was a leak and actually a trial that, you know, couldn't be visibly seen. So that's all we prepared. Uh, and we've talked with, uh, a corner called council, with Alan Gill and, uh, the inhabitants regarding, uh, implementing cycleway along Victon Water Road. And that will go from, uh, Union Corner to Brissolane. But unfortunately, they don't have the funds, you know, the last six hundred yards to Golden Bank, which I think is a shame really, it's like three and a half a job in a way. But they haven't got the money, we can't think about that. So we're working on that one. Uh, let me pull that to the past here, sorry. Yeah, I'll just let you know that I'll do sit on the licensing, this ladies licensing committee, which entails seven chips a bob in a week. And just to finish off for you, um, uh, last Friday, I attended a mall of mine meeting at Trivera Village Hall. Yeah, Trivera Village Hall, a little small community in the outskirts of, uh, Falmouth. And, um, tomorrow night, uh, tomorrow lunchtime, I'll be invited to, uh, the luncheon at Dudon Village Hall, uh, the Christmas luncheon, the efforts I've been putting a village over the past year. Thank you for that, thank you.
Thank you councillor Sorensen. And you've got a question councillor even?
Yes, please.
Oh, sorry, yeah, of course, yeah.
Yeah, Dave, um, it's good to hear that the shops, you're looking into shops. They've been a complete mess for over ten days. Okay. Can you, if you're doing that with a portfolio order, talk about two shops at Casey Road? Because there was hairdressers, you know, they're now empty. And if you're going to get two flats, you just want to get two more flats on the Casey Road because it's needed. And can you have a look or have a word with Cornwall housing? Because they're doing the roofs at Hayman Way and where they've got their skip is dangerous. Okay, the kids are climbing on the wall, they're climbing into the skip and it was all broken, the chum could end up getting really hurt.
Is it full now? Is it full up now?
Yes.
But it should be taken away, I'll have it on. Yeah, of course.
Uh, councillor Kirkham.
I've got a quick question, Dave, I saw you ask a question for councillor, that shop's that's brilliant, I wonder if Ollie has actually come back because he said he'd come back soon, right?
He did say he'll come back, you're looking at it.
Has he done it yet?
Now, he's come back saying, I'm looking at it, he's passed on to another person, they do, they always pass it on the line, they let someone else do all this. But they are doing it now.
Sorry, sorry about that, I'm really very cold. Someone's killing my case, sorry. Uh, thank you for that, any more questions for councillor Sorensen? Uh, no, councillor Joel?
Yeah, so as Dave said, we had a few joint meetings, Dave, myself and Dean in Barstow for highways. No, you weren't on that one, last week, October, a bit of a while. The new paper. No, no, the one, the one and R two divisions, not your divisions, sorry. So we sorted that out and then me and Dave were on the licensing committee, licensing act last week. And then we set a review that are going to bring in, look at the new spiking annually, you know, for the, staff all the clubs and bars, they've got to do annual spiking course, you know, so that's a good thing, so I'm supportive. That's on that front. Uh, strategic planning on Thursday, a huge soda farm is trying to sit in off, we've got central platter next Monday. I phoned up South West Water this afternoon because the sewer station below our place was overflowing into the river into Mainport, they never knew nothing about it, unbelievable. Because I phoned up the number on the gate, how have you got through this number, this emergency number, it is in River City. So hopefully they came out, sorted that out. Uh, and then the footpath between Swanpool, uh, Mainport, I don't know if you know, is anyone walking around there recently, they're redoing the whole path? It was something which the town approved many years ago. And it's all been funded by Natural Eners, it would be a really nice path between Mainport and Swanpool, then obviously from Swanpool now on the gills, so that's going to be a good thing. Keep sure, so that's me.
Thanks councillor Joel, appreciate that. And councillor Evans?
Yeah, can I just say that, uh, as, as a member of Boswell Ward, I never had an invite to talk about this cycle trash.
Is that the councillor's?
Well, he's not called councillor.
He's the on cycle.
If it's happening in our ward, it'd be nice for us to be least tolerated. I just managed to come to, um, Kate, she didn't know nothing about it, I do, I don't expect her to come here and hear about it. It'd be nice.
It's through, it's through the Cornwall councillors. And we invited Dean, not as a councillor, but as a, as a cyclist, it'd be nice for us, you know.
Okay, that's fine, councillor Evans?
Well, mate, I'd just say that it was my request to Cornwall council, uh, from Saturday that day, that it was a response to that. So the meeting was between me and Cornwall council and the two, um, division members were invited to listen.
Okay, thanks, it, I mean, I always appreciate councillor's information, so everybody knows the same things, it's always very useful, but we'll, um, we'll move on, so just be mindful of that in future. Uh, councillor Kirkham?
We've had a council meeting as well, the Cornwall council is sixteen million in red, so that should make us all here feel very virtuous. Um, it's really about housing, homes, yes, financial school, transport, SEN, children in care, there's big overspend, and it's mainly, to be fair, because of massive demand, because of the cost of living crisis, most of the things, things that's going to be after working, we have the central government funding from. Um, there was, Cornwall council took our lead and passed a motion for the ocean at the last, um, meeting, which was fantastic, which was completely cross party and brilliant. So there is a report being pulled together, we've actually got an employee to work upon it, which is fantastic, so that's really good. And just to touch on those things, um, we've been doing lots of arguing about road resurfaces because Cornwall council, Cornwall, whenever they've come resurfaces a road, they have to go round cars and come back again. They've now, they're applying to get, this is quite a good one, they're applying to get the right to actually tow vehicles that don't move when resurfaces, things happening. So it's worth, I think, getting that out there, that that will be happening in the future because a lot of people leave their cars for long periods of time, they don't know, so that's something that, um, Cornwall council, Cornwall will be asking for. And the other thing, I probably said it at the last meeting, but I just want to say again, um, that the bus is gone, the bus is ruined. And, um, which, um, which is fantastic and everybody is much happier.
Excellent, thank you. And councillor Eva?
I asked the other two Cornwall councillors, so I just want to ask you a question as well. The sixteen million in the red?
Yeah.
Does that include the twenty million that they give to somebody else, another council? Or is that on top of that?
That, that was asked actually at the last council meeting, um, after councillor Sorensen asked his question, the land's direct has been repaid, it's been covered by the taxpayer.
Okay. Thank you. Um, always useful and delightful to hear what you guys have been up to, thank you for the work you're doing on behalf of Falmouth. Right, moving on to twelve, which is committee reports, we'll take these in bulk. So the first one is twelve point one, FMGP committee part one reports dated twenty fifth of September, thirtieth of October and twenty seventh of November, please.
Second of September.
Fantastic, second please. Um, councillor Clare, all in favour of their true and accurate presentation, carried. Um, twelve point two, planning and licensing committee reports dated twenty fifth of September twenty three, sixteenth of October twenty three, sixth of November twenty three and twenty seventh of November twenty three, please. Thank you, second please. And that's councillor Clare again, all in favour of those being accurate, that's carried, thank you. And the twelve point three, cultural services and leisure committee, I should have my glasses open. Part one reports dated eleventh of September twenty twenty three, not bad, bad, don't use dog. And fourth of December twenty twenty three, um, that's cultural services and leisure, that's councillor Seale.
Yeah, lovely voice.
Um, and anybody for a second, councillor Colley, all in favour of those being accurate? Excellent, thank you very much. Um, and twelve point four, grounds facilities and environmental action committee part one reports dated the eighteenth of September twenty three and the thirteenth of November twenty three.
On the point of accuracy, the second of those reports doesn't have me as attending, although later it says that I made a proposal.
Thank you for pointing that out, we'll ensure that's corrected.
That was the November incident, the second one, yeah.
Yeah, thirtieth of November. Apologies, um, for that, and we'll ensure that's correctly put in, um, are you preparing with that amendment?
The guy's amended, um, set up.
Yeah. Can I have a second for that one, please? Yeah, I'll be second back with, with the amendment on it, thank you very much, councillor Evans, and all in favour of passing those minutes, that's carried again. Fantastic, you have to apologise, I should have brought my glasses because my eyes are getting very tired. Um, item thirteen. Sorry, I don't think you can on iBabs, can't make it bigger, sorry. Apologies, can I make it bigger on iBabs, but you can't. Um, so I'm going to trust you've all read this, I'm not going to read the entire thing because we're still have a very long time now. So it's the white ribbon accreditation and, and support. Uh, so white ribbon accreditation for organisation, it's against one, about, sorry, violence against women and girls, whether it's in the workplace or outside of organisations. I'm sure most of you in this room know that I have history, um, with this for more years of my life than I care to remember. It's something that's very, very, um, important to me. That said, I do acknowledge that there is violence against men by women also domestically. I think it's important to recognise that, that fact, but this is a national, um, movement, the white ribbon accreditation. I know councillor Ross, I think you've been involved with this previously, haven't you? Um, it's something that's really close to my heart and it's something that I really do think it is, it's something we should support moving forward. I do believe we've got a second one, councillor Robinson, I think. Um, if, if that, you would like to, uh, speak onto it or?
I think I said it wrong.
I said it wrong. Um, anybody got any comments on this before we go to a vote? No, fantastic, so then all in favour of supporting that we become accredited? Thank you very much councillors, appreciate that, carried. Thank you. Item fourteen on the agenda, motion by councillor Dean Evans, NHS dentistry founder seconded by councillor Kirkham, councillor Evans.
Thank you, and I'll keep this short, I was hoping that Geoffrey Evans was, would be here because both of us were actually born before the National Health Service, before the dentistry came into place. So I was particularly concerned to get an email or in fact a phone call from my dentist to say that they're no longer my dentist because they're no longer NHS dentistry. And I didn't imagine that when I retired that I was going to start finding a private help, uh, private dentistry. But the situation for thousands of more in Falmouth is, uh, quite more serious. I, I put a, a post on a local Facebook group and I had, asking for their experience. I had over forty responses in just a couple of hours and they're all, they all said the same thing. Um, told of being on the waiting list for seven years. One mother said that her school aged daughter had never seen a dentist.
Sorry, and I can't hear you anywhere.
If you look on the NHS website, it actually says that you should check every six months to see whether you've moved up the list, you know, it doesn't give you any confidence that you're ever going to see a dentist. And I did see on one website that suggested the nearest dentist taking NHS patients was in Southampton, hundred and fifty five miles from there. And one family turns back up north, three hundred and seventy five mile rain trail because they moved down here, couldn't get a dentist, so they go back to where they came from just to be, to see a dentist. Uh, I have written out here, sort of save time, some of the comments that were recorded, so have a look at those. And I think it's important, you know, that we've all got a lot of pressure on our income, cost of living, rents and mortgages, fuel. And I think, you know, um, for vision of dentistry, there's, there's a twenty percent increase in throat cancer or mouth cancer because people are not going to the dentist. So, you know, health is going to deteriorate because we've not got dentistry service. And I know it's not a situation that we've got a lot of capacity to deal with, but I think we have duties councillors to do what we can. And so the, the proposal is on the agenda there, so I do hope you'll support it.
Thank you, councillor Kirkham, you're the second one, this one?
Yeah, I was pleased to second this, I think everybody in this town has suffered with not being able to get an NHS dentist or losing their NHS dentist. Particularly those dentists practice in Falmouth where recently they've just basically lost and shed their NHS patients. The same has happened across former areas. There is a ray of hope in that the dentist is lost with it before they got to that point. Because dentistry is now being devolved from the central secretary state down to former NHS, they managed to renegotiate, so the children, the elderly people were kept off. So we do have the power to do that now, but only sort of at the start of that process. I think the one down here, it was just too late, too far gone. Just a few stats, only fifty percent of people were meant to have an NHS dentist, that's all the funding there is for it. Funding is actually being handed back to the government at the moment because people can't find an NHS dentist. And that's partly because a lot are leaving and partly because the contract doesn't work for them anymore, they can't, they say they can't actually make any money out of it. Tooth decay is the most common cause of hospital admission for six to ten year olds and thirty three million pounds per year, uh, last year was spent dealing with tooth decay hospitals.
It, it doesn't surprise me, my children haven't seen a dentist in recent pre-Covid. Uh, one of my daughters had to go and have teeth, with teeth removed in hospital because they haven't been seeing a dentist, so it's not a shock to me at all, I would definitely be in favour of this. Um, councillor Seale?
Yeah, I had already headed the agenda, it was like, yes, so I shouldn't have interrupted when we were speaking, but yes, my school aged child was also never known to get the dentist, we do check opposition on the waiting list. Um, and, um, I was, I even asked for a paid service, which is still called Igenis, um, a couple of months ago. The earliest for this paid service they could see me was April. So, um, we're actually, you know, actually called the state industry in Falmouth. I know some people who are actually, I know to the new dentist, um, as I said, at the top of Piligree Street, a friend of mine has actually made a monthly subscription to be part of that, it's actually incredibly expensive, good for them, they feel that they can, they can pay for that, but I think for most people it would be beyond their reach. And, um, is that well? Sadly, but actually I'm going to go and see my, going to my husband's home country and then we all have to disappoint the people there because we can't get them here. It's actually, it's not convenient. It'd be very sad.
Um, councillor Eva?
Yeah, um, just for Emily's sake really, um, she meant her children, couldn't get the appointment. My son phoned around almost every dentist in Cornwall and he found someone taking on children under the age of sixteen. She's in Miler, so it might be worth you asking before a court prints out in the paper and you go.
Yeah, me too.
But when I called, excuse me, sorry. Excuse me, but when I tried to contact the dentist that was supposed to be taking on people, it's that he weren't able to bypass the list.
Yeah, well, he was.
That I wasn't told that.
We were going to agree with them, but then they're.
Is it, is it your son makes it and someone? He's talking about.
No, 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 no. My son just decided to phone every dentist he could till he found one who would take. My grandson's eleven and they've taken him on and it's the last couple of weeks.
I know, we're having a.
Last couple of weeks, so they took it, they've taken him on in Miler, so it might be worth you asking, but I fully support the motion.
That's really useful, councillor, don't print that till tomorrow afternoon, so me and you can call them.
It was in last week?
Oh, was it? About Miler?
Yep.
Well, okay, I'm going to move to the vote on that one, um, everybody in favour of that? You know, that's carried, thank you very much. Um, so we're skipping over item fifteens, we've already done it, um, and on to sixteen is the scheme of delegation.
Yeah, scheme of delegation, so just is the update scheme there, but actually it's been updated again since there, there's some recent changes. So if, if this is, uh, approved now, the updated, updated version will go to the annual meeting with standing orders in due course.
Um, councillor Evans?
Just on point of accuracy, um, the report talks about the, um, director of cultural services and the staffing reports now refer to the dowry director, which is right.
Cultural services director.
Yeah, it is, it's cultural services, yeah. Um, so I'll move.
I'll read that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Um, I'll move that from the chair, can I have a second please? Councillor Colley, everybody in favour of approving that? That's carried, thank you very much. Um, item seventeen, representatives on outside bodies to approve? Do you want to?
Yeah, we do that, so this is about councillor Evans replacing councillor Rowe on, as representative on the Marathon Line forum. Um, and then councillor Sorensen is currently the alternate on that, so that stays unchanged. And there is another one as well, councillor. And there is another one as well. Councillor Evans, Dean Evans, as has advised me that he no longer wishes to be one of the alternates for the Swamp Hall Forum.
Okay, everybody happy with that? Um, do you want to propose a second on that?
Yes, please.
Uh, so I'll propose that as a change. Everyone seconded. Councillor Rowe, everybody in favour of making those changes? Carried, thank you. Um, eighteen fair trade, we've already done. Um, town management report, which is part of the case, is, um, something that I think was too big, wasn't it? Too big. Um, I take it you've all read his report. I'd just like to, again, thank him for all the work that their team has done this weekend for those that were volunteering. It was cold, it was moist at points. Um, and they did another remarkable job for Falmouth. And that's the last of this year. I hope nothing else will last for weeks, frankly. Um, they've done a cracking job. Um, so many thanks to him. I'm going to assume there's no questions for Richard as he's not here. Yeah, everybody happy to know that? Fantastic. Um, town parks point, part one, which is number twenty.
Yeah, so part one, there's a couple of code of conduct complaint outcomes. Uh, the first one is a complaint by councillor Dean Evans, Jewel and Sawnby in respect to councillor Robinson, which was rejected by the monitoring officer. Uh, the second one is also been rejected by the monitoring officer. That's come to the front by residents' association in respect to councillor.